2024 meeting of the 40th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Councilmember Baker.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Mayor Protem Gavin.
Here.
Councilmember Hannon.
Here.
Councilmember Patterson.
Here.
Councilmember Vilani.
Here.
Mayor Dean.
Here. First order of business is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin with support from Councilmember Vilani. Are there any changes or corrections? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, we please call the roll.
Black.
Yes.
Gavin.
Yes.
Hannon.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The agenda has been approved. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
We've now come to the portion of the meeting where you may comment on items that are not on tonight's agenda. When you come to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. Council will not engage you in discussion, but it doesn't mean we don't care. There's a paper on the table right outside this door where you can leave contact information if a member of city staff or department director needs to get back in touch with you. You have three minutes to tell us what's on your mind and in your heart.
Yes, thank you, council members. I'm hoping you might give some time in a future meeting in consideration of altering the outside burning ordinance, and forgive me if this has been recently brought up or not.
Excuse me. Name and city of residence.
I completely disregarded your most basic instructions. My apologies. Mark Wolf, Berkeley, Michigan. To reconsider the outdoor burning ordinance, it says currently that any chimenea, outdoor fireplaces, metal grill, fire pit devices and others are violation of local ordinance, yet, you know, other cities really close by with the same type of population density and types of homes managed to be able to generate some additional revenue for the city with burn permits and put some internationally accepted fire codes in place for outdoor burning, like no burning within 20 feet of a building, must be an enclosed object, no greater than, no taller than, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So there are ways, I think, that the residents, at least the blocks around where I live, would appreciate that considering the proliferation of outdoor fire pits. We, you know, to be frank, we use them, and thankfully, the police are, we'll say, judicious in their ticketing of the ordinance, but it seems a little silly, given that we're all adults in the room, and if we follow the ordinance, we pay the permit, that we should be able to, you know, basically have a barbecue outside of your barbecue. That's what it is. It's a grill, essentially, and hope we can give it consideration on a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf. Ms. Mitchell, do you have any correspondence?
Um, yes, I do. Bruce Poel, Berkeley, asks that council please provides Berkeley taxpayers with the quantifiable reasons you used to support the recent decision to approve a $44,640 expense in the solid waste budget for customer service, and what did the council do to mitigate those reasons before deciding to allocate solid waste funds to a customer service position, a fund that supports a mostly sacra function?
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, I'm closing public comments. Ms. Mitchell, please read the items on tonight's consent agenda.
One, approval of the minutes, matter of approving the minutes of the 40th regular city council meeting on Monday, May 20, 2024, and the city council work session on Monday, May 20, 2024. Two, motion number M 5124, matter of approving the purchase of three 2025 Ford Police Interceptor Utility All Wheel Drive Marked Police Vehicles for $147,705, $49,235 each for the Department of Public Safety from Longhammer Ford, 1960 East Main Street, Owasso, Michigan, 48867, from the vehicle's account 101-345-985-000. Three, motion number M 5224, matter of authorizing the mayor and city manager to enter into an intergovernmental agreement for lockup services between the City of Berkeley and the City of Lathrop Village. The City of Berkeley will provide lockup services for the City of Lathrop Village for $100 per prisoner. This intergovernmental agreement shall be for a term of three years, beginning on the first day of July 2024 and ending on the 30th day of June 2027. Four, motion number M 5324, matter of authorizing the city manager to enter into an ambulance service agreement between the City of Berkeley and Universal Ambulance Service. In consideration of the services to be performed by Universal Ambulance Service under this agreement, the city shall pay Universal Ambulance Service for the term of this agreement, the sum of $1 annually. This agreement shall be effective for a term commencing 7:00 AM July 1, 2024, for a three-year term ending 6:59 AM on June 30, 2027. Five, motion number M 5424, matter of authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with the Oakland County Tactical Consortium, OCTAC. This agreement will allow the Berkeley Department of Public Safety to remain a member of OCTAC, which will further the department's efforts to prepare for emergencies. Six, resolution number R 1824, matter of considering a resolution designating deputy city manager for public service, Sean Young, as the Act 51 Street Administrator for the City of Berkeley. Seven, proclamation number P 1224, matter proclaiming June 19, 2024, to be Juneteenth Celebration Day. And eight, proclamation number P 1324, matter of recognizing Doug Provost for his 50 years of service as an umpire and supporter of the Berkeley Dads Club.
Well done. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Hannon with support from Councilmember Baker. Any corrections or additions? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Gavin.
Yes.
Hannon.
Yes.
Patterson.
Yes.
Vilani.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Black.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes. The consent agenda has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number one on tonight's regular agenda.
One, recognitions presentations, matter of receiving any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
I've asked Councilmember Black to read P 1224.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, declaring June 19, 2024, to be Juneteenth Celebration Day, whereas Juneteenth is a holiday marking the end of slavery in the United States, and whereas the state of Michigan began recognizing Juneteenth as an official state holiday in June 2005 with the passage of PA 48 of 2005, and whereas millions of African Americans were captured and brought to this country as slaves in the inhumane conditions of slave ships that sailed across the Atlantic Ocean, and whereas while approximately 11.5 million African Americans survived the inhumane conditions, it is acknowledged that many millions of African Americans did not survive the passage, and whereas it is recognized that slavery then existed in this country for more than 200 years until the United States Congress passed the 13th Amendment of the Constitution, abolishing slavery throughout the country on January 31, 1865. And whereas Union Army General Gordon Granger arrived in Galveston, Texas several months after the passage of the amendment, and one of his first actions was to read General Order Number Three, which stated that all slaves are free and that former masters and slaves have absolute equality of personal and property rights. And whereas, following General Granger's reading of General Order Number Three, celebrations erupted as slaves learned of their freedom and subsequently June 19, Juneteenth, became the emancipation date for those long suffering for freedom. And whereas, since then, Juneteenth has been known as the oldest celebration commemorating the end of slavery in the United States. And whereas, this tradition of celebration has remained strong in recognizing the great triumph against the cruelty of slavery, and honoring and respecting the strength, endurance, and immense resilience of all African American ancestors who endured the shackles of slavery and those who preserved to see its end. And whereas, citizens must join together to acknowledge the history of slavery and the oppression which followed its ending, and to further carry forward the ideals of equality and democracy for all, regardless of a person's racial identity. Now, therefore, the Council of the City of Berkeley hereby proclaims Section One, that June 19, 2024, is hereby declared as Juneteenth Celebration Day in the City of Berkeley. Section Two, the City of Berkeley calls upon the community to pause and reflect on this nation's history of slavery and oppression, to celebrate the progress made thus far in ending slavery and the equal rights milestones that have followed, and to acknowledge that more progress must be made to ensure those Americans of African descent are truly free and equal as we move toward a brighter future. Proclaim this third day of June 2024 at the regular meeting of the Berkeley City Council. Signed, Bridgette Dean, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've asked Mayor Protem Gavin to read P 1324.
Thank you, Your Honor. A proclamation of the Council of the City of Berkeley, Michigan, recognizing Doug Provost for his 50 years of service to Berkeley Dads Club as an umpire. Whereas Doug Provost grew up in Madison Heights, Michigan, where he developed his passion for baseball and honed his skills as a ballplayer while participating in the city's youth program. And whereas Doug went on to play as an outfielder on the varsity team at St. Benedict's Catholic High School, which ultimately afforded him the opportunity to play in a parochial league championship game at Tiger Stadium. And whereas, following his military service, he resumed working at the Detroit Windsor Tunnel, and in 1972, he and his wife Glenna purchased a home in Berkeley where they would raise their three children, Dana, Deena, and Douglas Jr. And whereas, in 1974, Doug began umpiring baseball games for the Berkeley Dads Club organization and has worked games at every age level within that program ever since. Over the years, Doug has had many special on-the-field experiences, and one of his most memorable occurred when he was assigned to a crew that worked a Berkeley High School varsity baseball game at Comerica Park in Detroit. And whereas, the 2024 season will be the 50th year that Doug has umpired youth baseball in the City of Berkeley. Now, therefore, the City of Berkeley resolves, Section One, it is the intent of the City Council of the City of Berkeley to recognize Doug Provost for his 50 years of outstanding and dedicated umpiring service to the youth of the community and the membership of the Berkeley Dads Club baseball organization. And Section Two, the City Council invites all residents to join them in congratulating Mr. Provost on this incredible and impressive milestone achievement, introduced and passed at a regular city council meeting on Monday, June 3, 2024. Bridgette Dean, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Provost, we have something up here for you, and we would, I'm sure all of us want to shake your hand, but do you have something you might want to say?
Well, not too good at talking, but I appreciate this. It's an honor. It's been a great 50 years.
That's awesome.
The body is just saying, time to give it up. I appreciate this. Thank you.
Thank you so much for all of your service. I had the pleasure of meeting Mr. Provost for the first time. He was, his reputation preceded him, but this past Saturday, and I just said to him, like, you must have seen so many things over the years, you know, umpiring, and, you know, Mayor Turbick was there and still remembers a call that he disagreed with when it was, you know, and, you know, of course, I wasn't stepping into that, but at the end of the day, it's, you know, you're seeing families and children and different levels of athletes, and that's the constant, right, all throughout the seasons and the years. And so I thank you so much for your passion and for being such an integral part of Berkeley by umpiring all these games. So I wish you well and so happy that you could be here tonight and so that we could celebrate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Mitchell, please read item number two on tonight's agenda.
Resolution number R 1924, matter of considering a resolution in support of establishing an early voting precinct for the City of Berkeley, Michigan, beginning with the election scheduled for Tuesday, August 6, 2024.
Is there a motion to approve R 1924?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin.
Support.
With support from Councilmember Hannon. Mr. Ganser.
I'll just say briefly that there's nothing more important as a U.S. citizen than having the right to vote. As everybody knows, the state legislature did take some steps to expand voting options, what was this, two years ago? And tonight, Victoria, or I should say Clerk Mitchell, is going to be walking you through a decision that we need some guidance on regarding early voting, early voting centers. So with that, Ms. Mitchell.
Absolutely. Thank you. So before you today is a detailed report and resolution regarding establishing an early voting center in the City of Berkeley. Steps taken toward establishing an early voting center thus far as we reduced precincts, we remodeled City Hall, and spent time in the clerk's office researching and reviewing legislation pertaining to this matter. The city is currently in an early voting center agreement with Oakland County. We're partnered with Huntington Woods, Pleasant Ridge, and Oak Park, and the City of Oak Park hosts the early voting center at their community center. And at this point, it is free. They are not charging. That is something they're reviewing, but it is free for the City of Berkeley to use. The county provided all the equipment and supplies. They were able to pay for that through a grant that was initially offered for opening up the centers through the state of Michigan. They hire, train, and manage the staff and provide all setup and tear down. Costs incurred at the center, which is predominantly labor, is split between the four precincts. The impetus behind Oakland County initially establishing this was to help out the communities for this unfunded mandate put before us, although there was a grant, so some grant monies were applied to the purchases, and they were just hoping to help the burden placed on local community staff of their clerk's office. And before you tonight, because the deadline to approve opening an early voting center here in council chambers is Friday, that is the deadline to provide notice, and also to provide notice to the county, if we were to operate the early voting center here, we would need to withdraw from that Oakland County agreement. So basically, that's why we're here before you. We've taken all the steps, but now I feel the costs are a little higher definitely than what we had anticipated. We had, I had generally, you know, we had good intentions that reducing the precincts from seven to four would put more money into the city clerk's budget, but at this point, although we are kind of in the red zone, I feel it would be fiscally negligent to not bring this before council, as it would take a large sum to transfer from the general fund.
Thank you. Mr. Ganser.
Just to close that out, there is no question here that providing voting convenience to our voters is important. However, we do know that there are a number of priorities that are currently not in this, in next year's budget that we're going to be discussing over the next handful of months. And so, again, as Ms. Mitchell was stating, this is one of those times where it's like this priority is not clearly out there. It's a budget amendment that would be required to pull this off and to make this work and to provide this level of service to the community. We need some additional feedback from city council if this is a priority that you all agree with, or if these dollars should be spent elsewhere. The option to, the option to take advantage of early voting is not what we're talking about. That option is there. It's in, right now, it's in Oak Park. The discussion here is whether or not we bring that option to the City of Berkeley proper.
Thank you.
With that, we're happy to answer any other questions.
Any public comment on this agenda item? Discussion from council. Councilmember Vilani.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I have two parts to my question here. So first, Clerk Mitchell, I know that our city does a really great job ensuring that we have safe and accessible elections. So for everybody listening, can you remind them if we were to continue to use, be part of the partnership and early voting was in Oak Park, what are all the different ways that someone can participate in voting in case maybe that's not the most convenient for them? Because we have several options.
We do have several options. So of course, as you stated, they could go to the Oak Park Community Center. Also, part of the agreement with Oakland County is voters could go to Waterford. They have a regional center in Waterford. But residents can vote via absentee ballot. There's no reason absentee ballot voting in the state of Michigan, so they can come in, call, email the clerk to receive an absentee ballot. They can do that by the clerk's office sending an application, and then we'll send them a ballot, or also there's a permanent ballot list where a resident can go on that list. There's no application, and then they will automatically receive a ballot for every election.
Perfect. All right. And so the second half of my question, I'm actually going to direct to Director McMinn. So we may have residents who really just prefer that in-option voting, and with it being in Oak Park, are there any resources that we have within the city, whether it's through the smart transportation, that people could take advantage of to ensure being able to get to a polling site?
Absolutely. If somebody would need to go to Oak Park to do an early, or early voting, they can absolutely call us, as long as, again, two days prior, you know, Monday through Friday, 8:30 to 4:00, you know the spiel. But yes, we would be happy to take any persons that need to go to the Oak Park Community Center as part of our daily transportation.
Thank you. And I did put you on the spot, so.
No problem.
Those were my, pretty much my exact same questions. She took them first.
Councilmember Baker.
Thank you. Excellent questions, and thank you very much for bringing this forward so that we can respond in a responsible way ahead of the timeline that's been requested of us. Can you share a little bit more about the participation rate thus far in the early voting? I know that it's, it's still relatively new. Our society and our community hasn't really fully gotten used to it yet as an option. So certainly, I imagine that over time, there would be a continued uptick in participation in and early voting, but what are the, what are the numbers looking at so far for the very few examples that we have?
Absolutely. So we piloted through Oakland County. We piloted the early voting center November of 2023, and we had 11 voters from the City of Berkeley. And then for the February presidential primary, we had 44 voters. Now, I do feel hosting the early voting center here would yield hundreds of voters, obviously due to the ease, and if they're here conducting other business.
Right. And at the same time, if we were to stay with Oak Park and continue the communication, and I appreciate the question about opportunities for transportation for those that so seek it, I would imagine there'd be a similar uptick in that as more and more folks become aware of it and all of that. So if I, if we make, on that thread, in what ways do we plan to, if we were to stay with Oak Park, how would we communicate that to the residents and remind them of how they could participate in that process?
Well, if we stay with the City of Oak Park, we are not mandated by the state to send an early voting postcard to each registered voter, as we did that already notifying them of this opportunity. But we do have a full communications plan that I've been working with Director Flora. It includes the monthly email newsletter, the Berkeley Buzz. We do specialize email blasts for registered voters. We can even pinpoint it down to, you know, people on the absentee ballot list, people who haven't voted yet, things like that. And we are heavily doing voter registration drives through the clerk's office right now, so we're reminding everyone, you know, they can vote early, and word of mouth, of course.
Excellent. And one last question, if I may. You had mentioned earlier about the grants that were available to help procure the additional equipment necessary. Would, if we were to bring that in-house, would we see any incremental fees or charges, or would we use the existing equipment that we have? How would all that work, just to kind of net it out for us?
Yep. We would use the existing equipment we have. I just today received an email from the vendor, which is Hart. That's the vendor that Oakland County uses for election equipment. They are requiring, they were retrofitting tabulators. They are now requiring the purchase of a tabulator, which is actually use a ballot-on-demand machine for early voting, so that would need to be purchased. And I am still trying to get the final answer, but I believe the county has used the grant dollars that were available in that initial.
Okay. So if we were to bring it in-house, not only would we have more labor responsibilities to staff the facility, but we'd have additional capital outlay as well to procure at least some equipment?
Right. A small amount.
Yeah, but still.
Yeah, yeah, it is.
It all adds up, doesn't it? Yeah. All right. Thank you so much. Really appreciate it.
Anyone else? Mayor Protem Gavin.
Thank you, Your Honor. Clerk Mitchell, can you talk a little bit about the experience so far in working with Oakland County? So I know, not only in terms of, you know, customer service for Berkeley residents that are, that are using the facility, I know Oakland County's got certainly some, a little bit more expansive resources, but can we, can we just talk generally about kind of customer service aspect that residents have experienced when using the facility in Oak Park?
It has been a positive experience that we've heard. The, I would say the only negative feedback we've heard are Berkeley residents who expressed, you know, that, that they wish it was here and they didn't have to drive to Oak Park. But it's been a great experience. I mean, our Oakland County Director of Elections does an amazing job, and they just jumped in right off the bat and organized this. You know, we, Oakland County was the first in the state of Michigan to pilot it in November as that was not a requirement of the state. And we have some of our workers who work there. There's workers from each community, so of course, a voter could walk in and see a friendly face that they might see here on Election Day. And it's, all of the clerks of the communities I mentioned that are in the group, we all serve as site supervisors, and also the deputy from Oak Park and Rachel Wood as well. So one of us could be seen, you know, at any given time.
Great. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Another great question from colleague. So the commute to Oak Park, right, could you kind of characterize the approximate distance from an average Berkeley resident? It's not like 68 miles or anything like that, right?
No, no. It's, it's, I actually don't have the exact mileage. I'm sorry about that. I can get that to you. But it's across 696, it's directly on Coolidge. So Berkeley residents should be familiar with Coolidge. Just take Coolidge south, once you pass 10 mile, the next main light takes you to Oak Park's campus. So it's, it's not a far drive.
Okay. So just approximately, that sounds like about three miles.
Exactly.
Yeah, ish, right? Depending on where you live. If you're up by Bacon Park and stuff, it might be, might be four.
Right, right.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you again. And would there be any negative ramifications from the county? And would there be any negative ramifications from the county if we were to, to decline this opportunity and stay with Oak Park? Would we, would we see any ill effects or would it just be status quo and everything's fine?
It would be status quo. We would, the clerk's office would not need to take any action because we're in the agreement. It would only be to withdraw from the agreement.
All right. So if we were to vote yes on this, we would be voting to withdraw from the agreement?
Yes.
So a no vote would mean to stay with the agreement?
To stay with the agreement.
Okay. Thank you for helping clarify. I want to make sure I get it right when I, when you do the roll call. Thank you.
Councilmember Henan.
Yeah. And while I think it would be very convenient to have it in the city with the small number that we have using it, even, even if we expected an order of magnitude increase bringing it in city and just the additional cost to bring it into Berkeley is $6,000 to $9,000 in election, you know, per election and plus the capital cost, the opportunity cost, the staff overhead. You know, I just don't think this is the time for it. And, and we have the opportunity to revisit this in two years when the contract's up for renewal. So if the situation's changed, if the price is more equal, if there's more demand for it, then I think would be a time to look at it. But at this time, I don't think it's time to enter into this contract. And just to be clear, so we remain in it by doing nothing, we remain in it?
Yes.
And we don't need to make any resolution saying what dates our early voting dates will be?
Correct.
Okay.
Anyone else? I just want to clarify also, I know that there was kind of a reconfiguration in City Hall, not only for that early voting option, but also for the convenience of the clerk's office being right across from a precinct. And it also decreased traffic to the community development treasury counter. And I think there's a bit more security up, you know, you're behind the door, you know, that could potentially lock. So yes, while there was the reason for the earlier voting, there were other reasons as well. And I know that it just seems like the flow is better. I also was thinking about your commitment for being on-site there versus here. That's a big chunk. You're, you're quite a resource for us and that's, I think, a big ask. I mean, obviously, if the numbers dictate it, and that was one of the things that as we go along, we'll have a, the numbers will tell a story if there's an uptick. And I'm sure, obviously, to what you said before, if it were here, I'm sure there would be people that use it. As Councilmember Valani pointed out, there are so many ways to, to vote, way more than ever before. And so that's a great thing. So I'm inclined to be a no vote on this as well, just for the, of the conversation that's happened. So Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on R. 1924.
Henan?
No.
Patterson?
No.
Valani?
No.
Baker?
No.
Black?
No.
Gavin?
No.
Dean?
No. The resolution has failed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number three on tonight's agenda.
Ordinance number O. 624, matter of considering the first reading of an ordinance of the council of the city of Berkeley, Michigan, amending chapter 46 elections, Article II precincts, section 46-16 through section 46-23 of the Berkeley City Code.
Is there a motion to approve O. 0624?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Patterson with support from Councilmember Black. Mr. Ganser.
I'm going to turn this right over to Ms. Mitchell.
Perfect.
This ordinance amendment before you is more of a procedural amendment, but looking at this ordinance which defines the precincts. It's somewhat archaic and chunky. Other municipalities don't go into the depth we do per ordinance by listing every street name that surrounds a precinct, along with the number of precincts. So what we're proposing is that we take that out. Also, the approval to approve precinct boundaries, the, the accurate governing body to approve changes is the Election Commission. So this also would address that right now, that authority is with the incorrect governmental body. We're also, I'm bringing this before you today because with the changing nature, with the redistricting commissions and different, we're looking at precincts and we're going to be in a new state rep district. So I'd like to use that opportunity to clean up some of our precincts. So we do plan on working through some changes. So this will be, make it more efficient.
Thank you. Any public comment on this agenda item?
Greg Duroff, Bacon Avenue. I just have a question. Does the ordinance has written, it seems to me, I read where, that it was going to establish a precinct for in, early voting. Is that, did I read that correctly? And if so, does the prior motion have an impact? Is it mandated or does it make it optional? Because in essence, do you understand where I'm coming from?
Yes, excellent question.
Attorney Crist.
If I could, Mayor, through the chair, the, the proposed ordinance provides that the city shall also maintain an early voting precinct subsequent to council approval of that, of that early voting precinct, which by the prior action, they haven't established. So is...
There's no conflict here based on their prior vote?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other public comment? Discussion from council. Councilmember Henan.
Yeah, I did have some questions along those lines as well. First with, just addressing the early voting precinct, for even number of years, we don't have a choice. That's a state requirement. So there will be an early voting precinct in even number of years. And as a good practice, I think we plan on doing it in odd number of years as well. So yeah, my question was the, you know, maintain an early voting in 4616 and 4618, you know, having an, early voting precinct subsequent to council approval. So do we need to make a resolution defining those or have we already? And do we need to do that for each election or we just do it once and establish it and then it's done?
Through the chair, I think the intent of the proposed ordinance before you would be that it would be done once and not every election.
Okay.
And then it, the other provision of the proposed ordinance amendment is that, that will be able to be changed by resolution of the Election Commission with respect to the specific boundaries on a going-forward basis.
Right. Yeah. And just to clarify for people, when we had to change boundaries before, it has to come before us. It takes a long time. Instead of, what's more standard, the Election Commission that does that most other places. Okay. I'm good with this.
Thank you. Any other discussion from council? Councilmember Baker.
Thanks. Just, yeah, I like, I like keeping it simple and streamlined and this certainly cleans up a lot of the additional work that we had been doing unnecessarily. So I'm, I'm appreciative of this and I'm sure you guys are thankful to have one less thing on your plate. So it's good stuff. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on O. 0624.
Patterson?
Yes.
Valani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The ordinance has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number four on tonight's regular agenda.
Motion number M. 5524, matter of accepting the quarter ended March 31st, 2023 budget to actual report.
Is there a motion to approve M. 5524?
So moved.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Gavin.
Support.
With support from Councilmember Henan. Mr. Ganser.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. Before you this evening is, and we can talk about this another time. Normally, where I've come from, these are on a consent agenda. This is an item that you'll receive quarterly. I think you've already had these in the past, but we just went through a big budget process. We're a little bit behind. We're working on catching up. We're also looking to continue to roll out various tweaks and changes to our processes here under a different city manager as well as a finance director. Before you this evening, we've kept the line item level in place, even though that's not how you approve your budget. Ultimately, we would like to get to that department level, department level, just like in your budget. In addition to that, you have a series of comments in here where Director Johnson is trying to point out to the reasons behind some of the variances. I don't know how much detail you received before in the past, but we're trying to, again, flag those items where there are differences to try to give you at least a start of, of an explanation. Obviously, we're always available for comments or questions as well. Carl will not be here tonight, or is not here tonight. He was going to, he will be here on the 17th, but we didn't want to hold this off until the 17th. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions, but future meetings, this will be a consent item. It's basically a receive and file. And then obviously, as we get into those budget amendments, when those come in quarterly, those are opportunities if there are places, excuse me, if there are things that we need to make adjustments for based on this report. Ultimately, we're hoping to get them all synced up so they're both on the same agenda. With, I guess I'll just add on that, with as few of the changes that there were, since we just got through the budget process, we just put them off until the, it might be the next meeting, actually, the, the end-of-year amendments. So any questions? I'll try, but I'm not a finance director.
Thank you. Any public input on this agenda item? Okay. Discussion from council. Councilmember Henan.
Yeah. My discussion is no discussion. The budget report covered everything that I needed to see and, you know, we saw the outstanding questions from last time that are coming in at the next meeting, but this is fine.
Thank you. Any other discussion from council? Councilmember Baker?
Likewise. I found this to be quite satisfactory and I do appreciate the progress towards budgeting at the department level, which I think is an appropriate altitude, understanding that the details are there if we ever need to double-click inside of those and have the confidence that, that the numbers will back up the vision that our, our department heads have, have helped establish for us in our community. So this report is great. Looking forward to the next meeting as well, as my colleague mentioned, and I'll, I'll be supporting this tonight. Thank you.
I did have a follow-up question then. So if we don't get the line items, how would we go about getting those in the future?
Well, so...
Would they be in our packet still?
That's totally something we can discuss. Like Carl and I are kind of sharing with you what we're used to because here's, here's kind of the reality of how things work. When you're approving at the department level, you can move, the departments have the ability to move things within the department as long as it's within that budget. Now, I, I will be honest with you, I don't know all the parameters that are laid out here. I know what my parameters were elsewhere. So that might be an area that the council may want to look at at some point in time, like what are the guardrails on moving those funds around? But as far as details within an activity, let's say something piques your interest and you want to sit down and talk about it or you're looking for something more, just, just call. But again, as we're going through this, if we take a change further than what this council's comfortable with and you want us to go back to this or a hybrid of the two or something like, just communicate with us. Ultimately, we want to provide a report that, that answers the questions that you all are going to have on this quarterly basis, so.
Thank you. Councilmember Black?
So Carl's memo, moving forward, finance will propose amendments prior to the quarterly reports being sent to council to ensure that all line items are under budget. This current report has several line items that are over budget due to no third-quarter amendment. So I'm trying to, to, because here, it, and again, what I'm reading is if we're overspending, how are we supposed to know how well, you know, we're actually performing the budget if we're not getting, if we're forcing budget amendments, right? How, I just, I, I'm trying to, I'm trying to line up with Carl the same because it's still, I, I don't feel like that's very transparent.
I will have to defer to him. I think I know what Carl's trying to say.
Okay.
But I don't want to speak for him because what you're asking is a fair question and I, I don't want to make up an answer that's not accurate. So can I ask you to hold that?
I know that might be a Carl question. I'm just, I'm reading that and it's like, if I'm taking him, if I'm taking him for what he said and if somebody else here wants to, to try and clarify that, I'm, I'm all for it. I just don't get where that, that's going.
Yeah. So there's a couple of different things. One, you've got the, the line item level. Like there are going to be times when line item two is going to come in less than what we had budgeted for or anticipated, but line item 27 is going to cost a little bit more. And so you've got that flexibility within the department. Part of what you're talking about is that my responsibility and Carl's responsibility that when we're seeing things that are out of line and we're seeing patterns that we're going to, hey, so-and-so, why does this keep happening every year?
Right.
If we're not, well, I can't pick like a item like healthcare because healthcare is always on the move, but something that should be relatively easy to budget for, we'll do vehicles. Vehicles are always coming in higher, right? But we're pulling them off of a state bid, all the pricing's out there. How are they always coming in higher? Those types of things we should be watching for and, and talking with our staff about those. That doesn't fully answer your question. I ask you to hold that. We'll follow up with you and/or let's ask Carl about that further on the 17th.
Councilmember Henan.
Yeah. I think one thing that might help is often I've seen that you don't just have the budget amendment, you have what the original budget was. And so you can, you know, in the same report. And so you can see what the change has been. And then you can ask yourself, is this a reasonable deviation or is, do we need to dig in deeper? And I think some of the proposed formats that we're looking at, you know, explain, will explain what those deviations are. So it's not just a new, an updated budget in isolation. We see what our original was as well. And so you can make that reasoning, you know, is this a reasonable request or is there something we need to dig in deeper?
Budget amendments serve a purpose. They are not the purpose, so.
Yes.
Right.
And what Councilmember Henan is describing, that's how I'm used to seeing budget amendments, is you have what was budgeted, what you're amending it to, and if we're asking for, for an amendment, we should be telling you why we're asking for an amendment. And so that's, that's kind of how I'm imagining that's going to come forward. But we will, we will talk about that further, Carl and I, and we'll follow up.
Like a, like a concrete example, I think when we get, you know, we're in a transition phase and we're getting things more, moving smoothly. But I think what we want is like, the clerk's request tonight would have also come with a budget amendment, which at the same meeting, and, you know, we looked at it and we decided now isn't the time and, you know, also would have pulled that part from the budget amendment as well. So that would be a concrete example of how, when things are working better, that, you know, it all works together.
Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. And I, I appreciate this and it's, it's a great learning and growth opportunity for all of us as we continue to understand the intricacies of the budget and, and the pros and cons of digging, of getting too deep into the weeds versus pulling too far up into the sky. Fundamentally, the budgets are, there's three reasons for an amendment, right? It's a, it's either timing, like if, if prices are favorable and we choose to pull ahead some spend in order to take advantage of an opportunity to, to get economies of scale, so a timing could be an issue or an opportunity. Geography, meaning it, you know, within a department, this is where having it more at the department level is really advantageous because within a department, we want to provide them with enough rope to make good shifts in their spending to meet the needs of their staff and their constituents and things. So there's a geography within a department. And then there's performance. Sometimes stuff just comes in more expensive and other stuff comes in cheaper than we think, right? So, you know, in, in essence, you know, way, think about that, like, you know, performance and, and geography and timing. And all of these can be traced back to that. and geography and timing, and all of these can be traced back to that. And whether it's positive or negative is certainly something that we have every, we have the absolute responsibility to be, pay attention to and be aware of. And so, you know, as we continue to explore what the right altitude is for this council and our community, those kinds of, that kind of language could be helpful to say, oh, this is a timing thing, all right, you know, we're going to get this extra thing now because we can get a two-for-one sale, or something like, or two-for-one and a half kind of a thing, or something, you know? Or if it's a, if it's a geography within a department, hey, we're finding that this thing just really isn't being leveraged, so let's move a quarter of that funding over to this other thing within the same department in order to really juice that thing up. Or of course, like we said, there's always performance where there's just an issue that needs to be addressed, either it's an overage or an under, and we try to learn from that from estimating perspective going forward. So I just wanted to share how I approach and think about these things, and why, again, I'm satisfied with this report tonight, and I'm looking forward to the additional conversation next time.
Thank you. Yes?
I'll just, I don't know if I'm, I'm not trying to shut down the conversation, but I'll just close, at least on my line of thinking, I'm hearing what's being asked, and when we go to prepare our budget amendments, I'll make sure that it looks like some of what we've talked about tonight. As far as long-term tracking and things like that, there are some items that we will be talking about here in the future that should help, at least from an annual level. Getting down more granular, there's probably some other steps that we need to put in place internally to watch out for some of those things, but ultimately, if we have a solid kind of strategic expectation from council, we know the directions we're supposed to be rowing in, we're aligning, we're aligning that budget to those items, we know what our guardrails are, and we know what your expectations are, council's expectations, then we should be able to get this to where you are all hoping to get that to at some point here in the future.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll on M. 5524.
The Lanny?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henin?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The motion has passed. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number five on tonight's agenda.
Discussion, matter of discussing with possible action, the short-term future of a millage proposal.
Mr. Geinser?
Yes, this is a discussion that I thought would be timely to have on an agenda. I've been in here about a month and a half now, and there's been still a lot of discussion about 2023 millage, what's happening next, are we going in November, are we not? I don't like to presume, I think I know where things stand, but I think with where we're at, to make sure me and my staff have clear direction on where we should be going with this conversation, I thought it appropriate to bring it to the city council and have you all kind of determine what's next.
Thank you.
Not that you have to have all the answers tonight, I should say.
So, who would like to go first? Councilmember Baker?
Just a question, clarification, and has to do, I mentioned before about timing and geography, and so from a timing perspective, is, what, are we aware of the deadline by which we would need to submit language should we choose to go forward with a November ballot proposal?
I know the month, I don't know if I know the date.
We wouldn't need to approve a resolution in the July meeting.
Basically, in July, so we have like a month to kind of, okay. All right, thanks. Yeah, just, I wanted to understand the timing, if it's the consensus that we're going to choose to not, then obviously, if we do think that it's the right timing, then we probably need to lean into this a little bit. So I thank you for the clarification.
Councilmember Henin?
Yeah, I don't think we're ready. Just regardless of the statutory deadline, we would have needed to be leaning into this much earlier and working on it. So I think we've, I think we've had a feeling individually, but we haven't discussed it as a group, but that, and that's probably why we haven't been taking action, knowing that it's just not the time, that, you know, we talked about some of the processes, we need to get more ironed down and set, and then lay the groundwork if we choose to do this in the future. So, you know, I'm not, I don't have a date proposed for a future one, if at all, but just for now, for November, but I don't think it's the time.
Thank you. Council-
Oh, please, after you, I've already gone.
No, I echo Councilmember Henin, I don't think we're there. I don't think there's, I mean, I would be very shocked to see something that there, that even provides a road to us getting there. So I think if we were to propose a millage at this point, that would be akin to, you know, ready, fire, aim, and that is the opposite of what we need to be doing. So there's no way from, from my desk that I would approve something like that.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Thanks, yeah, to complete, to continue the sentiment, having understood the timing, I think this is something we desperately need to have as a conversation, and we need to have in order to move our city forward. I think we're feeling the effects of having this pay cut every, every cycle, right, because of Headley and Prop A, we, our salary, the city community is basically cut every year, and we're trying to do everything we can, and at some point, we need to continue to tighten the belt, and we're seeing the effects of that, and it sucks, right? And I feel like we've, we're turning the ship. The conversation we just had about the budget amendments, and more broadly, the budget approach that we're beginning to coalesce on, I think will bring about additional transparency, additional levels of trust, additional levels of clarity that we can build upon, because many of the issues that residents raised with me, which I think were legitimate, had to do with a lack of understanding, a lack of, you know, the bits and pieces and how all that works. So by having our shop and order, and being able to put forth a clear message about, here's the benefits of what we want to continue to bring and what we could bring in addition with, if we were to restore our salary that we've lost all these years, I think that could be very advantageous. And to my colleague's point, it's a lot of work, it's going to take a lot of trust, it's going to take a lot of time to build that trust, and I'm eager to establish a timeframe that we do think is realistic, if it's the spring, or if it's next, you know, August or something like that. I'd like to do that thoughtfully, and ensure that we have robust engagement from our neighbors, right? Because we all live here too, right? To have a robust input from our neighbors and folks that have exceptionally valid questions, I think that would be really helpful, but I will be in favor of not moving forward in November to the specific question at hand.
Great, thank you.
Yeah.
Mayor Proton, Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, I agree with my colleagues, frankly, all three of them, you know, in no small part because some, a constant theme and refrain that we've, we've talked about and we have heard is the ability to communicate, and not being able to frankly formulate and lay out a full-on plan to kind of share information as robustly as we might be able to over the course of, you know, quite frankly, a very condensed timeline if we went this year, I think is not a wise strategy at this point. So in addition to what all my colleagues said, I would certainly highlight the communication side of things as well.
Thank you. I concur with everything-
Yeah, I agree. I think there's the communication and also finding what our needs are. There's that part of it too, and I don't think we can do that-
Agreed.
-by July, so.
Right. I do think we've, we have identified needs for capital equipment, capital improvements, but I think that we haven't fully formulated like the entirety of the need, and until we do that, I think we need to wait, continue on the path that we're on, since you've joined us, Mr. Geinser, and get the necessary information. So I, too, would delay on that, and in terms of when, I think that's dependent upon all the information coming through, so.
One last, I'm not throwing a ringer in here, it's interesting, you know, it's like, when I've talked to folks about this, I've had two, so it's not a particularly large sample set, but two residents said that they would vote in favor of a community center proposal, but not in favor of a millage, and I thought that that was just interesting, right? You know, so they see a more specific need in the community center rather than leaf pickup, right? They don't seem bothered by that, whereas a community center is important to them. And so that's interesting. Obviously, what we're talking about here is not a community center, I just wanted to share that there seems to be some appetite for, at least two, I mean, for whatever that's worth, in terms of investing in making our community, give it the amenities that we deserve.
Sure.
And that's a different conversation.
And it is a different conversation, but I do appreciate the fact that you brought that up, because honestly, when I look at some of our facilities, and I think, I think of my own home, I think of where I live, and when I need a new roof, I put it on my house. When, if I had a crack in the foundation of my house, I would repair that, and if it couldn't be repaired, I guess I would figure out, you know, if, do I have to build a new house? And I look at all of our buildings in the city, and these are our houses, if you will, of the city, and I think it's quite frankly embarrassing that the value placed on a community center is so low, especially in a community that is very active. We have a very active senior community. All the programs that are run out of that community center, Dan, I applaud you, and Teresa McCarleton before you, the building has a significant crack in the foundation, the roof is being repaired, and the door sometimes works. So if that were the condition of your home, would you be inviting people in and saying, you know, come in and get comfortable? I don't even need to talk about City Hall, the Southern Wall is minimally, you know, one of the things, I could go on. The library needs, needs some things, and so as you take care of your home, we're responsible in the city of Berkeley to take care of the buildings here that serve us, that serve our community. And it also comes into, to your point about people being, well, I would support a community center, but I don't really care about leaf pickup, that's where the priorities come in. Everybody has a different idea of what's important and what they want. And at the end of the day, we just, we have to come together as a community and make those decisions. So while a millage would not be building a new community center, these are conversations that will have to happen at some point. Councilmember Henin?
Yeah, and to your discussion, I think it's easier to, for people to conceptualize, understand a new building, a new facility, and all the things that would bring, and it's harder to wrap the minds around operational expenses and the tremendous amount of staff work that we have that goes just unknown behind the scenes, but is absolutely critical for the functioning of the city, including the operational costs that would be needed to run a new community center. So building the building, we've also got to have the money to keep running it and keep it maintained as well. And one thing we haven't mentioned is we are also in the middle of a search for a city manager, and they would be, if we moved forward, they would potentially be starting right around the time that the vote would happen, and that just adds more unknowns for people, and, and, you know, could understandably, well, I want to maybe wait and see what this new city manager does before I give more money. So, so yet another reason that I don't think this is the time.
Fair point.
Hundred percent.
Anything else? I think you have direction, but if you don't let-
I don't think we need a motion, that's pretty clear. We'll keep working on the things we're working on. Probably July, you'll start seeing some recommendations on some of the tools that we can start utilizing. We'll just keep plugging away. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there an opportunity for public comment on this, or no?
I mean, what's the, I'm looking for direction.
Well, there's no motion on the table at this point, but it's up to the chair of the meeting as to-
Sure. Come on up.
I'll be brief. Councilmembers and mayor, I, on the, in the, about another millage, I gotta say, I moved here in 2015. A large reason I moved here is relatively low, actually, low taxes and a very safe community with really good schools. I would, I, just speaking to my neighbors and for myself, I really caution you on, although I totally agree with you, Ms. Mayor, that the buildings are pretty embarrassing, but, you know, there's a millage seemingly every year, an option for us to possibly build a, an athletic center for which I believe was, we would get 25% off after we bought, after we paid for the building, it was a proposal, paid for the building, we'd get a certain, residents would get a certain amount off to use the building that we helped subsidize for our tax dollars. Terrible idea, first of all. Secondly, we went and we voted in thinly the new performing arts center for the high school, which is a, I think, great for our kids and for our school system and overall public school health. But if we keep having a millage every year, even if it's needed, we're burning like these bridges, talking about community centers, when we have pretty poor roads that I can tell, and a need for doors that work at the community center. So I just caution you from a, from a citizen's perspective, if we see it every time, people like myself who are willing to go yes, I mean, I voted no, just because I had voted yes three or four times, and I watched my taxes go up along with my property value, which is great if I'm selling my house, but I'm not.
Right.
So eventually, you know, the, we just get tired of it, and it gets old, so it just-
I do just want to point out that the bond that was approved is not a city initiative, that was the school, so the city sees none of that. We haven't asked for a Headley override since, I believe the last one was 2012. And in addition to all the great reasons that you stated for moving to Berkeley, could I throw in city services? Is that one of the reasons?
Yeah, without a doubt, I'm a former police officer, I love having four or five uniformed officers for like 500 square feet of city, it's crazy, I know, but I support it and I vote for it all the time. But I just, I'm just asking you to be cautious when it comes to things that, although a couple neighbors might say, sound great, but I can tell you that I, nobody within my radius of where I can yell for my house would ever, on Elwood, vote to put a, you know, a brand-new community center or an athletic center.
Right, and I really, really want to drive home the point that, that when we ask for a Headley override again, it is, it has nothing to do with a community center at all. This is, you know, operations, general fund, and public safety, and those were the two, you know, the two things before. But we also can't ignore our capital equipment and capital improvement purchases.
I agree.
But those buildings are a separate thing, so I really didn't mean to confuse or muddy the water.
Sure, yeah, and I appreciate that, Ms. Mayor. I just, and again, I'm not teaching anyone in this room anything, I'm just giving you a voice of-
Absolutely.
If we, I don't care what the measure is, if it's a bond, if it's a tax, if it's anything, if you are potentially increasing my property value or my property taxes for any reason, and I see it on a ballot, the voter doesn't care why, or through what you means, it's just, you're going to cost me more money, and I see it every November, that's all.
Thank you, Mr. Wolf, appreciate it.
Oh, you remember my name?
Well, I mean, not going to lie, I wrote it down, so.
Mike Weisack from Berkeley, your point is well-taken on the infrastructure, the status of the community center and the other, other buildings, but I know I've had direct conversations with a number of you on city council about what are the city's priorities? No one has been able to tell me, and I've asked probably a dozen or more times. So, I mean, so if the priority is a falling-down community center, why are we spending millions of dollars on parks? I love a nice park, I mean, anybody would, but if the community center is in such bad shape, what is the priority? So, I mean, you know, again, I welcome your going in and digging down and looking at these expenses, the finances are a mess in the city, there's such a high level of distrust of city government, that, I mean, you have a long way to go if you're going to try to get a millage approved. But, you know, I think it all starts first with, are we spending the money in the right way on our operating expenses? It's been suggested many, many times, you know, to go back to zero-based budgeting, you know? No, you see, he's shaking your head, nope, not interested, not interested. So you guys don't want to do the hard work, so-
Oh, that's, that's an unfair statement.
I think so.
I believe it is unfair and untrue. There are many, many different ways to go about budgeting. Zero-based budgeting is just one.
Of course.
And so, that's a decision-
You're speaking to someone who's done budgeting for 25 years.
And I know you have a significant financial background, I'm not disputing that, but that, how we do our budgeting moving forward will be a decision of council with either the interim city manager or, and/or the city manager that comes in after Mr. Geinser. Everyone at this table is committed to getting this right and doing the right thing, which we, we have been doing to the best of our ability. Now, the fact that there's, I don't agree with your sky-is-falling sort of vibe here, because it's not, and, you know.
Well, when you're cutting services-
Yeah.
-because you don't have any money, that's, that's not a good sign. Cities that are financially healthy don't cut services.
We are financially healthy, we are, we are doing the, we did the belt tightening that we needed to do in order to keep the fund balance where it should be. We have a new finance director, he's digging in, Nate's digging in, so stay tuned for what they bring to us in these coming meetings.
Well, if you don't keep an open mind, nothing's going to change.
I know very much about those as well.
So, you know, again, I encourage you to start thinking about priorities-
Yes, we are absolutely doing that.
-and what really, what are the priorities of the city, rather than, you know, we always talk about needs and wants.
Sure.
It sounds like the community center and the repairs are needs, maybe park improvements are wants, you know? I mean, again, I'm all for the best amenities, the most amenities, but we have to be able to afford them.
Oh, absolutely.
Not only, not only to install them, but to maintain them.
Sure, and I agree with you. I would also, though, ask, what is the cost of disinvestment? Because we had park equipment that would not have passed today's safety standards, and when things broke down- and when things broke down, we couldn't even get a part to fix it.
Right.
So parks are good, parks are done. You know, we've made a significant investment in parks, and, you know, not only, I take my grandson, he loves Bacon Park, he thinks it's the best place
It's a beautiful park.
in the universe. But when we go there, we see people from, you know, "Oh, where are you guys from?" We come from Southfield, or we come from Oak Park, or we come from wherever. So it's a, it's a community investment, and so we've done those things. And there are kids that are playing, all levels of ability can be there. And that's also what's great about Bacon Park. Now, maybe the community center's the next thing, I don't know, but that's not a millage. I know that interim city manager Geinzer is polling us, us being council and city staff, to have a work session specifically on, we've done a strategic plan. Now let's together decide which are the things that we, that we're going to tackle, what are the priorities? So that's coming. It's all moving in the right direction. Can you feel the wind at your back, Mike? Because I can. I feel the wind at our back, and we're getting there, we're going, it's moving. Maybe not as quickly as you would like, but I believe in this council, I believe in Nate Geinzer, I keep, I hate saying interim city manager, but I know that's really who you are. But we do have our priorities in order in terms of, okay, what do we need to do to pull this together and move it forward? So stay tuned.
Okay, well, again, I just, you know, I, you paint a doom and gloom picture about the status of the community center and the other, and the other buildings.
Yeah, it is, yep.
So, you know, what did we spend on parks over the last two years? Well over a million.
Done, parks are done.
But my point is, is that had there been a strategic vision of priorities that had been established by city council, maybe that million plus, million and a half, maybe that could have gone into the community center, maybe that could have gone into City Hall, right? But, but we chose to, and again, I don't dispute it's a beautiful park, but you have buildings that the city owns that are continuing to deteriorate.
Yes.
And so it just begs the question, how would that million and a half better have been spent? Maybe the answer is a park, but then why, but then why, we can't complain about the deterioration of the buildings then, right?
Well, go ahead.
I'm sorry, just as we bring this to a close, obviously, much of Bacon Park, thanks to Dan and to Theresa McCarleton, was crowdfunded and funded through grants. So we didn't spend anywhere close to what you're describing out of our city funds.
How much was spent by the city?
I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but that's certainly, obviously, you know, we're here to talk about other things, but that certainly is public information. And as we look, move forward, I just wanted to offer that there are many creative ways, as you know, through financing, there's many creative ways to fund things, including a tremendous outreach of community support and grants that were available at the state and federal level, which helped us with that particular investment. So I just wanted to, a point of clarification
Thank you.
and credit where credit's due.
Great.
Well, I think it's great to get a few hundred thousand dollars in grants, but if you have to spend another million in order to satisfy that couple hundred thousand, that's sometimes not money well spent.
Okay, we have a disagreement on priorities, and that's okay, I agree to disagree, and I appreciate your input, Mike, I do. And, and thank you. I'm going to close this up. Councilmember Henan.
Yeah, and I just want to address one thing. Mr. Wysecz has had, I personally have answered at his inquiries in the past, and when they don't fit his preconceived narrative, he then pretends that we didn't answer. And we see probably the reason that people pull back from answering is the weaponization of our words. The most recent example, right now out there, a document is missing, so instead of waiting for it, the discussion is that we're illegally moving funds around without any proof of that. So the reason no one wants to talk to you is because if it doesn't fit the narrative, you pretend you didn't hear it, you change it, and you weaponize it. So we're up here trying to make progress, not just looking for things of the past to tear down. Come with solutions, don't just come with browbeating us and telling us what horrible humans we are because we disagree.
Okay, thank you, thank you. We're done. Ms. Mitchell, please read item number six on tonight's agenda.
Close session, matter of considering convening in closed session at the conclusion of the regular meeting to consider material exempt from discussion or disclosure by state or federal statute in accordance with the Open Meetings Act, MCL 15.268H.
Is there a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Councilmember Black. Ms. Mitchell, please call the roll.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. Council will go into closed session after we adjourn this regular meeting. So Ms. Mitchell, we are at communications, who will go first?
Councilmember Baker.
Hey, that's me, I'll keep this brief, if you can believe it.
I won't, when I see it. Sorry, I couldn't resist.
It's well deserved, it's well deserved. Historical committee met last week, they extend their appreciation and gratitude to many, so many of the fine students at Berkeley High School who came out to volunteer, not only in the museum, but also at their booth at Berkeley Days. We've received some tremendous donations and contributions to the committee, things that have been added into the museum's collection and things that they are scanning and returning. For instance, the Cano Lutheran Church on Catalpa has loaned boxes of historical documents and artifacts that the committee is dutifully scanning, archiving, and returning to them. They will have a booth at the Art Bash, come and visit. They will have not only information to share about our city's history and all that, but some fantastic items to sell as well. The next meeting is July 9th, and you can learn more at BerkeleyHistory.com. DDA meets next week's Wednesday, so I'll just share that the farmer's market starts this week's Thursday at, on the south... Berkeley Outdoor Social Scene, AKA The Boss, starts with the Art Bash as well. And for more information, you could visit any, you could visit downtownberkeley.com, or any of the participating establishments, which include El Patio, Amici's, Mongers Provisions, and The Rind. And finally, it was Jason Collins who said, openness may not completely disarm prejudice, but it's a good place to start. And so as we celebrate, and I look forward to your comments, as we celebrate Pride Month, remind ourselves that beauty begins at the moment that we decide to be ourselves, and let's celebrate the awesome diversity that this community has. And I always close by saying, please hug somebody you love. It feels good to give as well as to receive. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Henan?
Yes, the Tree Board, trees are now available for ordering on the city website. We don't have a nice, short URL that I'm aware of, but look for the forestry section on the website, or you can also call DPW to get on the list. We have several Tree Board members leaving, I'll mention them at a future meeting, but we have, they have elected Tricia Losi as the new chair of the Tree Board. They're taking a summer recess now, and their next meeting will be September 23rd. Then the Zoning Board of Appeals has a generator case and a case on a dimensional variance one week from now, on June 10th. And then, a couple of weeks ago, I was able to go to Lansing on a committee hearing for House Bill 4838, the puppy protection bill. I didn't get the opportunity to testify, but did talk to several of the members of the committee afterwards, advocating the situation that we find ourselves in, and hope to see positive movement on that bill. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Black?
So Memorial Day just passed, and everybody got to barbecue and do all those things, but I think we'd be remiss if we didn't understand that it's to honor people in uniform who died to give us the right to be here, to give us the right to sit on this council, to come to these meetings. And we don't have to honor them by agreeing, but we do need to be civil in our disagreement. So I will say that Citizen Wysecz comes to these meetings, he is passionate, we don't often agree, but I applaud his passion because that's what people in uniform fought for. So let's remember that. Conflict is okay. Said that to you earlier today, Madam. Conflict is 100% okay, as long as we get to a resolution. So if Citizen Wysecz asks for a document, hey, when is it coming? How long does he have to wait for it? Doesn't mean we have to be disagreeable. Acrimony is not acceptable, and oftentimes, acrimony is what happens when you have unresolved conflict. So I would just say, once a day, just remember that even in our disagreement, that is a right we have that others paid for, the ultimate price for, and don't ever forget that. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you, Councilmember Black. Councilmember Patterson?
The Planning Commission met last, two, last week, Monday, sorry, they're running together. They did recommend a PUD that will be coming before us. Their next meeting is the 25th at 7:00 PM. The Beautification Committee also met, they're continuing their summer work project, talking about a mural and some planting maybe at the community center. And I also wanted to note that our building official has drop-in hours now, every Wednesday, from 3:00 to 4:30 here at community, or at City Hall, so if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to drop in and talk to them. So it's a great service, I think.
Thank you.
And that is it.
Councilmember Vilani?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There are no updates from the Environmental Advisory Committee at this time for the Berkeley Area Chamber. Friendly reminder that this Saturday is the Art Bash from 10 to 6 on 12 Mile. If you visit the Chamber booth, you can spin the prize wheel, and you'll get a really great prize, I don't know what it is, but it's got to be good. Additionally, very excited about this, Berkeley Has Heart Photography Contest voting begins at the Art Bash. So out of all of the photos that were submitted, 20 of them were selected for our residents to vote on. You may even see a certain dog in one of those photos that we all know and love very well. But the cooler part of this is you can pick up your own coffee table book of Berkeley art, which, you know, would also make a great present, so you could stock up on these early for the holidays later on in the year and just check those boxes. Big congratulations to all of our graduates. We are coming to the end of the school year, so whether you have just finished your first year of kindergarten, you are transitioning to the middle school, or to our seniors who are off to the next chapter in their lives, congrats to all of you, and can't wait to see the seniors at the all-night party this year. So I'm excited to be volunteering there. And last but certainly not least, it's June, it's Pride Month, and so I am going to end with the words that I shared with my daughter and her friends when I took them to their first Pride Festival several years ago. And I think it also kind of goes along the lines of what Councilmember Black was sharing earlier, that especially in places like that, we see people with different opinions who don't always agree, but when you see hate, please show your love louder.
Nice, thank you. Mayor Proton Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Very quick update for me, the Library Board will meet next Weden, or, not next Wednesday, excuse me, Wednesday, June 26th, at 7:00 PM at the library, and then the Parks and Rec Advisory Board will meet June 13th at 7:00 PM at the community center. And again, just a big thank you to Mr. Provost for all that you've done for our community throughout the course of your career. Honored to be able to recognize you tonight, and thank you again for everything that you've done. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Geinzer?
I have nothing this evening.
Mr. Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor Dean and Council, I have no legal report this evening.
Okay. So I'd like to talk about pride for a moment, pride of place, our community, and each other. I attended the Rogers Elementary Memorial Day Ceremony where there was, Remember One was their theme, and in addition to the songs and poems, each student wore a paper dog tag, if you will, with the name of a fallen soldier on it, and they pledged to never forget the name of the soldier that was on their dog tag, and to honor them every Memorial Day. And it's important, as Councilmember Black mentioned earlier, it's important to remember those who made the ultimate sacrifice. What struck me, in addition to how beautiful the ceremony was, there were 400 children just all sitting in this, what seemed to me to be a small area, not a peep. They were engaged and interested and respectful, and they listened to one another, and there was an air of solemnity present, and I really want to congratulate and commend the children, the teachers, the staff, the principal, all at Rogers Elementary, because they set that tone, and they made that happen. Then on Memorial Day, that brought me to the gazebo here at City Hall, and then where our members of the Berkeley American Legion assembled for a Memorial Day celebration, and then from there, I went to the Legion to yet another Memorial Day celebration. I am proud of our Berkeley American Legion post, not only because they've served our country, but because of the value that that post places on community service, and not just service to veterans, but service to the community as a whole. So I'm proud that we have the Stanley Fonds Berkeley American Legion here in our community. On Saturday, I'm kind of taking you through my timeline of my week here. I had the pleasure of attending the opening day ceremony for Dad's Club Baseball and Mom's Club Softball. I am proud of the leadership that we have, the coaches, the umpires, that have given so generously of their time and their talent and their expertise. And parents, I want to thank you for showing up and supporting your children, for giving them the opportunity to learn a sport and to be part of a team, and I'm proud of our Berkeley baseball and softball organizations. On June 23rd, our DDA will bring the Pride Block Party to downtown Berkeley, I believe this is the third year, I could be wrong. I'm proud to have the Block Party here in Berkeley, and I'm very proud to be part of such a warm, inviting, and inclusive community. So thank you to everyone. And with that, entertain a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Vilani with support from Councilmember Patterson. Ms. Mitchell, will you please call the roll?
Henan?
Yes.
Patterson?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Black?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes. The Monday, June 3rd, 2024 meeting of the Berkeley City Council is adjourned, and we'll just head over to the conference room.